Good morning. I call to order the July 25, 2023, meeting of the Seline County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
At this time, I would ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and items pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission?
Rosemary Myss, Salina, Kansas.
Good morning.
I just wanted to let you commissioners know that last week Tuesday, the Granny Brigade had their third birthday party, and one of our special guests was the Secretary of State, Scott Schwab, and he highly talked about Jamie as being one of his best county clerks in the state of Kansas, and I just wanted to let Jamie know that, that she is very well appreciated in the state of Kansas, and I wanted to let you guys know that. He spoke very highly of Jamie. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? If not, we'll move on to the today's consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of addendum to ARPA agreement with Salina Chamber for choose Seline County marketing support. Also involved is the approval of the county commission minutes for July 18, 2023, and approval of the annual aid to local family planning grant contract between the Health Department and KDHE. Are there any items that commissioners wish to discuss any further or pull? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approved today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move into the action items. Item number one.
National Night Out proclamation with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission. I am here on behalf of Melissa McCoy for this proclamation. So National Night Out is based on the National Association of Town Watch. They sponsor this event to be held on August 1st every year, which is a Tuesday. National Night Campaign provides the opportunity for neighbors in Seline County to join over 38 million neighbors in 17,000 communities within 50 states and U.S. territories. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnership and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhood safer and a more caring place to live and work. All Seline County neighbors must come together with police and work together to build a safer and more caring community. Seline County Commission does hereby call that all neighbors of Seline County join the organization and the National Association of Town Watch and sponsors of National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st of 2023. For this event, we will be in Jerry Ivy Park from 4:30 to 7:30 on Tuesday, August 1st. We have, as of right now, 15 different agencies that are participating, anywhere between K-9 demonstrations, the fire department's bringing their fire safety house out there, KHP's having a couple demonstrations, the SWAT team will be out there for demonstrations, the mounted patrol will be out there with their horses, the Health Department will be out there promoting vaccines, Jamie will be hosting a miniature election within the park, there'll be a lot of giveaways and just fun activities, and Salvation Army will be having their canteen truck there.
That is one week from today.
Yes.
All right, well, you pretty well covered the bases there. Any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I will take a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, as National Night Out in Seline County.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we proclaim August 1st as the National Night Out for Seline County. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Michelle, I have a signed proclamation. I assume that you're the one that should get this. Thank you very much for doing it, taking care of it. It sounds like it's well organized. We'll move to item number two.
County Governance Documents with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning again.
Good morning again. Two weeks ago, I was here before the commission for the visioning item that my team was tasked with for commission aspirations. We did create a policy, a visual aid, and a short form for those commission aspirations. I am here to ask that either the commission approve the documents that staff has submitted or provide us with additional feedback and guidance to complete that visioning item. We recommend that the items be adopted based on the concept discussion, which did not have any changes suggested by you guys, and we can move forward and put those documents on the county website.
I'm going to ask that individual commissioners, if they have a comment, to please do so at this time, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Hay on my left. Were you on this committee that performed this document?
I believe this, when this during the, this wasn't during the visioning that we did.
That's correct. This is a staff task force that put this together as directed by the commission during your visioning session.
You know, in reading this document, I mean, I think that the scope of it is dead on. You know, it's the county commissioner is ultimately responsible only to the voters. You know, we need to prioritize our interests of our constituents, encourage civic engagement, seek to build collaborative relationship with other elected officials, recognize the value of their colleagues, seek out and consider diverse perspectives, and diligently review and understand all items presented and questions. I think those hit the nail on the head pretty good right there. I mean, you know, working with, you know, my colleagues, working with other elected officials, being either, you know, county, city, state, whatever, so I think the, I think this part is, I think it's a good document.
Mr. Sparks, you have any comments?
I just, I want to say is that it's, I really like the way that this little picture resolves the issues that's going on, and so it puts it out there as what the staff does compared to the public and the commissioners of how they should and could all work together. So it's very well put together. Thank you for your efforts, and everybody on the committee, so, yeah.
Commissioner Wees?
Well, I find it to be a very good tool. It speaks to the public of what they can expect from their commissioners. It also, when the commission went from three to five, it becomes even more diverse, and there's five individuals up here. We're not always going to agree with each other, and many times, individuals of the community might take exceptions to the thoughts of one or two of us, but it's a good roadmap to how we will go about doing our job and how we respect the public and vice versa. It gives a good roadmap for the public to understand what they can expect from the commission, so, good work.
Commissioner Shadwick, do you have any comments?
Just want to say that I, how much I appreciate all the hard work that went into this document, and I think that this is in proper manner.
Okay, that comes to me, and it looks like I'm kind of a guy out on an island here because while I do appreciate what all of this stands for and the way it's put together, and I don't disagree with most of the stuff that's on here, I do, however, disagree with making this a personnel policy procedure that goes into the Seline County personnel files. I just don't agree with putting it in there. I think we should all follow these things. We are, one of the lines in here says that we're elected by the public, and we are, and that's who we're supposed to answer to, but I still have trouble with this becoming a personnel policy and procedure that is, that is put together through the network of our employees to tell the commissioners how to do things. I just have a hard time making it a standard policy, so that's my comments. I would ask if there's any comments from the public who wish to comment on this procedure? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action. And this will fail if there is no action, no...
Mr. Chair, I approve, we should approve RFA 2023-147 as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve County Governance Documents 2023-147. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay, so that policy does pass four to one. We will move to item number three.
Kansas Forestry Grant with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Last one, I promise.
Good morning again, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of Rural Fire District 5. They have been awarded the Kansas Forestry Grant for chainsaws for their district. I am here to ask for the acceptance of the grant funds for $1,100. This is a 50/50 match, so the district will then also provide $1,100 to this project. These chainsaws will be used to reduce wildfire mitigation as well as assistance storm response if needed. They will be using funds from their special equipment funds. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
I'll start to my left. Any questions, Joe? Any, Mr. Sparks? No. Mr. Wees?
One question, Michelle. Who will have ownership of the chainsaws? Does forestry have any?
They just provided funding, so they will be the property of District 5.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shadwick, anything?
No.
My question would be, presentation wise, you're doing the presentation or asking for this, why doesn't someone from that far district not do that? Or is that...
They're volunteers, so the time of the meeting, it just was...
You're the representative for them, so I have no problem with this, and the $1,100 that is the 50/50 part of it comes from their budget, provided by their taxpayers in that district and not by the county itself. I always like to make that distinction. So, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Kansas Forestry Grant 2023-151 for $1,100 for Fire District 5.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Kansas Forestry Grant 2023-151 for the amount of $1,100. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Michelle. We will move to item number four.
Contract for Private Security with Hannah Bet, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning. So on July 11th, your commission authorized the expenditure of $36,000 of the county's ARPA funds for security screeners for the first floor, meaning that we have moved the county attorney's office from the third floor down to the first floor. So staff solicited proposals. There were two companies that provide private security services in our particular area. Smart Security, based out of Wichita, but they do have offices in Salina, advised that they would need a minimum of six weeks to have somebody hired and trained, and their proposal was one staff person at $28 an hour. The second proposal was from First Choice Security. They do have staff that is available to begin on July 31st, and they proposed up to one and a half staff persons at $24 an hour. So your alternatives today are to either enter into a contract with First Choice Security, enter into a contract with Smart Security, or do not enter into a contract at this time and provide staff with some further direction. The staff recommendation is to enter into the agreement with First Choice Security for the remainder of 2023 and into 2024, provided that the commission approves the recommended 2024 budget. The budget impact, as stated before, the $36,000 for 2023 would be paid with ARPA funds, and currently, the commission has $75,000 that is allocated in the 2024 budget for contract private security.
All right, Commissioner Wees, any questions?
One question. Will the $75,000 that's been allocated in 2024 provide that one and a half personnel for the total year?
We would hope so. In the contract language that First Choice proposed, it is a not-to-exceed price, so it would be the responsibility of First Choice Security to manage those staff hours, to make sure that they are not exceeding $75,000.
Mr. Shadwick, any questions?
No.
Any, Commissioner Hay?
The only thing, so we're looking at $24 an hour for the first full-time employee, the half be another $12, which is $36 an hour. That leaves for 100 hours to cover that $36,000. Is that going to cover, is 100 hours going to cover that $36,000 for the rest of the year?
So the contract is set up as a not-to-exceed price, so again, to Commissioner Wees's question, same type of thing. It would be on First Choice Security to manage those staff hours.
Thank you.
Mr. Sparks?
No questions at all.
Mine is kind of a squirrely question, I guess. How did we get a half a person here?
Just part-time. How about that?
Okay.
Part-time.
A little bit unusual to me. Is there any public comment regarding this request?
Mr. Chair, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this. You keep saying it's up to First Choice to make those funds meet. Isn't it going to be what we require? Do we know what hours we'll need and project that out?
We do, so that would kind of be the working relationship that the county would have with First Choice Security to make sure that the hours that are required would be covered by them.
And with the county attorney being down here eight to five, Monday through Friday, are we going to have a full-time security down here?
That is the intent, yes.
And how do you know when you want a full and when you want a one and a half?
Again, I think that that's working with First Choice to making sure that somebody is down here during lunch breaks or during court times.
Okay. Again, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Contract for Private Security 2023-149.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we provide for a contract for private security 2023-149 as presented. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry unanimously. We will, and move to, thank you, Hannah, we'll move to item number five.
Radio Purchase with Hannah Bet, Deputy County Administrator.
Hello again.
Good morning. Back on September 22nd of 2020, the commission approved a contract with Motorola for a new emergency communications radio system. The contract included costs for the infrastructure, the radio equipment, and maintenance for a period of over 15 years. Final sign-off of this project occurred on May 31st of this year, which actually resulted in a credit of $314,576.37 due to some modifications that were made during the project that were of lower cost. We also had some equipment that was built into the project budget that was not needed, and then also something they called tribal moderating fees that were not needed at the particular tower sites. Motorola considers this credit a technology credit, so it means that it can only be spent on equipment. So working with our different public safety agencies came up with a particular plan to utilize the credit for the purchase of backbone equipment for the WAVE mobile app, portable radios, and mobile radios for the sheriff's office, and portable and mobile radios for the road and bridge department. But today's request is actually to purchase the additional 35 radios that Road and Bridge would need to complete their fleet. Currently, Road and Bridge is not operating on the new radio system, and this particular purchase would outfit the department completely so that they would be able to communicate with other public safety agencies. So the total cost for these radios and the installation would be $175,845.97. The purchase of these radios would come from the Road and Bridge Special Equipment Fund, which currently has a balance of just 2.1 million, and the purchase of, the purchase of this would leave a balance of just a little more than 2 million.
2 million?
Mm-hmm.
Are there, I'll start with you, Mr. Commissioner Shadwick, you have any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Wees?
One question. Right now, does Road and Bridge have radio contact with dispatch?
They do. It's done through a patching mechanism because the Road and Bridge Department currently is on a UHF frequency, and the rest of the county operates on the 800 frequencies.
And with the purchase of this equipment, they can do away with the patch?
Correct.
And they can also communicate with an SO officer directly, or?
Correct.
Anyone else?
Correct, and this would also give them communication across the state too, since our 800 system is tied into the state system.
Yeah, I think the bigger game is right here inside the county, but emergency management then will be able to contact and work with Road and Bridge in case of a disaster and all that.
Correct.
Mr. Sparks, anything?
Yeah, a quick question here is for the sheriff's office. Back since the EMS and the sheriff's office on this radio situation was from the beginning, the main players, it's hard for me, they did not know how many radios and stuff that they was going to need, and this was not purchased to begin with?
So at the point in time when this project moved forward, the sheriff's department had purchased, had already purchased what they call a multiband radio for their patrol cars. It was another make and brand of radio. They were also, the sheriff had been purchasing those for quite some time because he knew that this project was coming down the pike at some point. So a lot of his radios that he has currently are several years old, out of any type of warranty and are not functioning properly. He didn't anticipate that when we moved to the new radio system. He was hoping that he'd get a little bit more life out of the ones that he had already purchased.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Hay?
Okay, here's, I guess here's the problem I got. When we entered into that contract with Motorola, was there anything in the contract that said if there was any credits or anything in the original contract that said that it was only a technology credit? I have a problem with them saying this is only a technology credit, you know? We entered into a contract for this system and stuff like that, and then them to turn around and say that we cannot use this money other than a technology credit when we could probably use that money to help pay back part of what we actually expend for this project?
Very good question. So the reason they call it a technology credit, and like I said, there was a lot of things that were built into the contract that ended up being either a lower cost or that we just didn't need it. Best example I can possibly give you is that we had it built in the contract for several bidirectional antennas. bidirectional antennas. So that is equipment that was built into the contract. Those bidirectional antennas for indoor coverage were not needed based off of the coverage level amounts that we got at the end of the project. So we can't use money for equipment to put towards the contract because it was purchased, it was equipment that was purchased with signing of the contract.
Okay, it still don't make sense to me that we enter into a contract with a company and we end up having credits, and they tell us how they can, we can use the credits instead of being able to use the credits the way we want to use the credits. I guess.
I would, I would maybe try and explain it this way. So if, if I enter into a contract to buy a million dollars' worth of eggs from you, and I only buy $900,000 worth of eggs from you, you don't want me to, you're in the business of selling eggs, right? You don't want me to be able to take that $100,000 and do something else with it. Motorola is in the business of selling radio equipment, so we entered into a contract with them to buy a certain amount of radio equipment. Turns out, we didn't need the stuff we thought we needed, but they still want to sell us the same amount of radio equipment.
Okay.
And my question would come with the, the $175,000 that comes from the budget of the Road and Bridge Department. The other departments that are, that needed the radio equipment and so forth, did that come out of their individual budgets also?
No, actually, those purchases were made out of the capital improvement plan. There was $600,000 that was set aside in CIP back in 2019 in anticipation for the purchase of this, this equipment.
Why wasn't the Road and Bridge Departments handled in the same fashion?
Well, they were asked, and at that point in time, I believe my conversation was, they just weren't in the position. They had some other things that they were wanting to focus on with equipment.
It just seems like we need, we need to do things similarly, I think, from department to department to department. Probably an observation that doesn't necessarily need to be made, but that's my opinion, so. Is there any public comment regarding this purchase or this action?
Mr. Chair, could I ask one more question?
Go ahead, please.
Is there a timeframe that this money needs to be spent?
By the end of this month.
Thank you. Why did you wait so long to bring it to us?
Well, I had quite a few hiccups with Motorola in actually getting me exact costs and prices, so that was, that was a little bit of a challenge.
This whole process seems to be a challenge based on what you've just told us.
Going to Menards and getting 11% back, but you got to spend it at Menards, and it, and your, your redemption, it will expire at a certain date, so.
Yep.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, we should approve RFA number 2023-148 as presented.
It has been moved, then seconded that we approve RFA 2023-148 as presented for radio purchases and so forth. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. We'll move to item number six.
ARPA Agreement for Childcare with Philip Smith Haines County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. So as part of the ARPA plan that we've been working on for almost two full years at this point, we had set aside some funding for childcare. We know that childcare is a great need in this community and wanted to be able to devote some of this once-in-a-generation funding to address that childcare need. The real question, and the reason it's taken almost two years to get to this point, is how to do that. There are a great number of needs in the childcare arena, including the need for more spots, and you could envision that as need for physical spaces, but you also could envision that as the need for workers to occupy those spaces and take care of children. And so we've worked with the Childcare Coalition, which is a group of leaders in the community who've been engaged in this much more deeply than I have for a number of years, and they ultimately have ended up, just in, earlier this year, finally coming into an arrangement with Salina Area United Way, under which the United Way is sort of taking the lead in trying to raise funds. So one of the things that the United Way has recently done is secure a state grant for $1.87 million that will actually address some of that capacity need, the physical needs. The agreement that you're being asked to enter into today is more on the financial side of the equation. So this is to create an endowment in the community that would allow for money to come back to childcare providers in the future to supplement wages, and the thought being that that would help attract and retain people in the childcare industry. So it's a little bit of an unusual use compared to many of the other things that we've done with ARPA funding, but that is, that is the proposal. And so we have a couple folks here, including Claire Lutis from the Salina Area United Way, who could answer additional questions about that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, I think, let's invite Ms. Lutis to the podium, enlighten us a little bit, and please state your name and organization you represent, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, Claire Lutis, Executive Director for the Salina Area United Way. At the beginning of the year, like Phil had mentioned, we were asked to kind of help lead this charge with childcare in Saline County. And through that, we kind of came up with a two-fold plan, one of the pieces being to build an endowment to look at the future of how we're going to sustain funding to supplement wages and increase slots for childcare, but then also knowing that right now we have a huge crisis and we need immediate dollars as well. And so the fund has also been created at United Way that annually we will provide supplemental wage sustainability grants as the first phase to all of our centers. So our centers currently, right now, across the community are paying anywhere between $4 and $6 less per hour than what Saline County has defined as the living wage of $15 per hour. So the ultimate goal is to have our teaching assistants moved to that $15 an hour, and then our lead teachers moved up to $18 an hour. So just right now, our existing centers and the existing staff, that is not including this new state grant that we got and the increase in slots and workers that we'll need, we need about $460,000 annually just to supplement the need to increase these wages for these workers. So that's kind of where this plan has come, looking at the future, but also knowing we need immediate needs as well, and using this ARPA dollars as some kind of leverage to help encourage local businesses to have some buy-in into this by being able to match their donations to the funds.
Commissioner Hay, do you have any questions, comments?
ARPA funds, they can be used for an endowment?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner. So, yes, so one of the very few restrictions on ARPA funding is that it cannot be used as a reserve account. And so I posed that question to our consultants, is an endowment a reserve account? And they have assured me that this is compliant with the federal guidelines.
Commissioner Sparks, anything?
Quick question here is, is, this grants that we're providing here is, is all relative around the United Way being able to raise money to match the grant?
Yes, so we, it is relevant to us getting that match. We've already been meeting with businesses, and we are, we are very, very close to having our very first business contribute and be a piece of the matching at about $75,000 for one business. We've met with businesses like Great Plains, Schwan's, Vortex, many of the local banks. We've had meetings, of course, with Phil and the city, and just continuing to have constant conversations with businesses to get this, the hospital has been a part of these conversations as well. So I, I hate to say this, but I don't think it's going to be an issue to get the matching funds. Businesses are very much interested in being a part of this.
And that's what's, what kind of brought this to my attention. I'm sitting here thinking is that the United Way has always done a very well job, a very good job, very well job, a very good job of raising money and funds in the community for years. And it, it kind of gets to me is that we're, you raise the money and matches that, and we're giving you money, but there's nothing in here about childcare. I mean, there's, except you're going to give some of this, or you're going to look at providing some of these funds to help caregivers and the community now raise their salaries up. And all I hear from constituents out here is that it costs them so much now to put a child in care that they have to stay home, they can't work no more. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at this going, is how, how do we, the county or these other people look at it and say, and how do we, how do we get any results? I mean, how do we look at the results of this action that's going to be provided?
Okay, so this is going to be a very long answer, and I apologize.
Because that's a long question.
Yeah, childcare is a very complex matter as we have all under, as we've all gathered through all of this. Okay, so when you look at centers, for example, first of all, all of our centers are nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s here in Saline County. When you look at centers, they will never be able to charge families enough to supplement their wages up. But then in that same regard to your question, we can't charge families the amount of dollars that we need to be able to supplement those wages. So that's kind of, A, where United Way needs to come in. With our fund, it is a total separate fund from our other pieces of the puzzle that we do with funded partners and our Make a Difference grants. So this funding that we are raising strictly for childcare will only be used for childcare. The hope is that eventually, as we build our endowment, we get more businesses on board, we can add more phases to this where we'll have enough dollars, A, to support the sustainability wage piece, but then also look at in-home providers, providing scholarships to families to help supplement their rates that they pay. And just to kind of give you an idea to answer that question of how much rates cost at childcare centers and in-home providers so that we understand what families are, are paying. In a childcare center, if you have an infant, which we are very low on infant care, and the state grant that we just got will add 40 infant slots to Saline County, which is huge, but per week, an infant costs about $185 to $200 a week for an infant. So that is birth to 12 months. So the first year of a life of family is paying about, you know, $1,000 a month roughly, give or take where they put them. And then, of course, the cost does decrease as the child gets older. But again, we know that scholarships are needed for families. We also know that a lot of our centers work with DCF. The YMCA, for example, 100% of their families are on DCF supplemental, helping supplement their tuition that they pay regularly. All of our centers do offer that. More families actually qualify for DCF than are aware, so our centers are really trying to work to help get that information out to our families and help them understand there are other options available as well. But the plan is to have multiple phases to what we're doing, but right now, the biggest piece is creating slots and getting workers, so we have to address that first so that it is available for, for families before we can keep moving on to the next phase. Does that make sense to answer?
That helps out a lot.
Okay.
And one other, I mean, just another quick question here, is, and I know this is due to regulations through the state or somebody, is that, is there a maximum of children that these areas that you're talking about that can have in their area for, per hour?
So it's not per hour. Each center is licensed for so many kiddos. So a family in-home provider, it all depends on the ages that they have. So if they have an infant, it reduces the number of bigger kids that they can take. In our centers, for every three infants, they have to have one staff and only nine infants in one room. So when you look at that, in one room, and you have nine infants, you're going to have three staff members in that room alone. So it is a very big balancing act. The other thing that is kind of hard for people to understand is that even though a center is licensed, say, for a certain number of kiddos, doesn't mean that they're going to take that full number. Because as children grow and transition, they have to have slots available to transition them into those age groups. So their licensed capacity is not going to match the desired capacity that they're going to actually fill their centers. An example would be Salina Childcare Association. They are licensed for 159 children, but they only have 124 in their facility, and they're kind of at the max that they're going to take because they have to have the space to transition kids as they get older.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Mr. Chair, I applaud the, the use of the ARPA funds to help with this childcare endeavor, but the red flag I have is that when ARPA is gone, this $400,000, I, I just can't see the, the county making that a budgeted item, and, and I fear, like all ARPA funds, that if, if they don't find their own source of revenue after the ARPA is gone, they're, the, they won't want to come back to the county for that budgeting, and that, that just throws that much more money on our, on our constituents as far as taxes. But, so I'm just raising the red flag now that I'm, I'm all for the ARPA funding, but ARPA will be gone, and, and they've got to find their own source of revenue, and I believe that's what they're trying to do with their marketing and their, and their endowment.
Just to throw in a wisecrack, the American way is if you inherit some money, spend it. It's kind of what the general American public does. Commissioner Shadwick, you have any comments or questions?
Is, is this the last of the ARPA funds? Do you have any other proposals coming forth?
It is not the very last proposal. We have, so there's, there's an amount of money, all of the ARPA funds have been slotted for something at this point. So we had $400,000 that was slotted for childcare. This is the proposal for how to use that $400,000. There are a couple of other areas where we're still in that same situation, where there's money slotted for something, but we need to actually get it on the ground. In addition to that, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we're, we're far enough into this now that we're starting to have money sort of turned back. Folks are not able to spend some of the things that they, they thought they were going to be able to, and so we have a list of things the commission prioritized a couple of weeks ago for where we will go next if we have money that gets turned back to us. So, no, this is, this is not the end. We'll, and because of the dead this is, this is not the end. We'll, and because of the deadlines in ARPA and the, the need to fully obligate the money by December of twenty-four, I would highly anticipate a flurry of activity about September, October of next year because we'll be reallocating all the stuff that didn't quite get spent.
Anything else, Marty?
What's up?
I've got a, a couple, three questions, comments, whatever. I listened to your proposal last week at the Economic Development Organization. And one thing that stuck out to me, a comment that you made was for every ten spots that are available, there's only.
Every, for every one slot, there's ten children.
There we go. One spot, there's ten children lined up to get that one spot throughout the community. Also, my question, are there any company-owned childcare centers? I mean, like Great Plains or, or, you know, whatever, that have their own in-house childcare center?
No, there's not. And again, it goes back to the cost. It is never going to be cost-effective for a business that we have found to open and operate their own facility. It's, it, again, it just goes back to looking at our centers, not ever being able to charge enough, not being able to have the, the dollars available to, to meet all of the different things that it would actually cost to open a childcare center. And I know Great Plains has looked at it before and financially, it just does not make sense.
Well, we, at the county, I know that we talked about it at one time. We, we didn't get very far with the, past the talking, but I don't know, somewhere or another, we've got to get the, the larger corporations. If they need people to work, they're, they're going to have to figure out a way to, to get something done on their own, too, not just looking for the government to, to help them out. Childcare centers that come under your head, your, your auspices of your, of your operation, I didn't realize there were some of those in Salina. How, how many are there?
There's twelve licensed 501(c)(3) childcare centers, but the licensing is very, you can be a licensed childcare center, but you only take preschool, aged three to five. So every licensed center might not be a full-capacity center, infant to five. So understanding that, that the, the verbiage of how it's licensed and stated isn't just straight across the board. There's a lot of in-betweens to it. So even though it states that there's twelve, they're not taking infant to five. They're not a full center.
My question would be, I mean, if there are five oh, five oh one c three operation, that's for, not-for-profit.
Correct.
So who's going to open one of those?
They're, the Y is Salina Childcare.
Okay, there you go.
All of them, all of them are. It's the in-home piece that is a little bit of a struggle that we're working with, but we have actually applied for a grant through Childcare Aware that will be another phase in peace. We're just waiting to find out. It'll be two hundred and fifty thousand if we're awarded. And that'll be the piece that we start looking at in-home providers and kind of help them as well. When we talk about the ARPA funds that are coming to an end here in September, where there'll be no longer any federal funding, when their prediction of those dollars when they go away, that we will see in Saline County alone about a thirty percent closure rate of childcare centers when those dollars go away, if we don't do something, which is where we're coming in. So, for example, this is just throwing out a number. Right now in Saline County, we have a hundred and eighteen in-home providers. If this would directly impact just home providers, we would lose about thirty of the hundred and eighteen closing. And when you think about that, that's about two hundred and fifty kids, which is going to basically undo everything we've just done with getting the state grant, which creates a hundred and eighty-seven new slots. And then we've already received another separate Childcare Aware grant that we are going to be opening a new center with First Covenant Church, and that will be another thirty-nine new slots. So about two hundred and twenty new childcare slots. So with the going away of those federal dollars, it, it's going to undo everything if, if we don't see some progress being made here in Saline County specifically to keep that from happening.
You, you've kind of answered my question there because I, I wasn't thinking about the churches and, and the why and things like that, would be these types of organizations that do that. And these supplemental of the wages would go to those organizations.
Correct.
Not to Iron Street Personal Childcare Center. Here, we're going to give you
No.
Ten thousand dollars to increase the wages of your people.
No, it will not be like that.
That's impossible.
No, no, no. It will be, if you're familiar with how our funded partners work, they will have an application process just like that. They will be providing their, their budgets, their audits, their staffing, all of how they're going to specifically increase, what their existing wages are, how it will be increased and how much. We already kind of have those numbers, but as we add more workers and do a lot of these renovations that are going to start happening from the grant funding and the, the workers and supplements increase, they'll have to provide that. They'll have to provide annual reporting. It will be an allocation process, so they won't get all of that money upfront. It'll be a monthly payment to them. So it'll be a, a very well-planned-out piece of the puzzle so that we can verify how funds are being used. We have a childcare committee that will be overseeing these grants, reviewing them, checking the reporting, all of those things under United Way as well.
Well, I very much agree with Commissioner Weiss and with the red flag on, on what's going to happen when this, this free money isn't there anymore. But we are also under that heading that if we don't spend it and give it to you, we got to give it back to the, to, to the feds. So we just as well head that direction. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing this. Obviously, we need it. So, okay.
One more question. I'm sorry, but this conversation always gets me thinking and I think of something else. So can a, can a business, knowing that this is being set up, make donations to a certain amount, knowing they can't fund one themselves, but can they make donations and ask to reserve so many beds, like?
So basically, that would be like buying slots. We, we don't want to get into the business of that. We, we need to think of it as a community solution, not a what's in it for me. We, we need to come together, all of, of our businesses, all of our community members, and realize that at the end of the day, if we can all do our little piece, we're not going to need to buy slots because we've done the work to make sure we have enough slots for our children.
Did the, did the Montserrat School?
Montessori.
Montessori, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That is now a daycare center?
It will be. It's not open quite yet. It will be the Salina Family McAdams Center. And it is a partnership with Schwan's, but they did not buy slots. It is a first right of refusal, which is then open to the public for their slots.
Explain that a little further.
So, so Schwan's will be paying Salina YMCA McAdams rent for them for the next ten years. But in return, their staff does get first access to the slot, but if nobody claims it, then it does go to the public. So it is technically not considered buying slots.
I think that's apples and oranges there.
I don't, sure. But that was something that was already set in place before United Way had stepped into this. It's been something that's been in the works for a while now. We weren't a part of any of that, unfortunately. So it was something done prior to us. But at the end of the day, Schwan's is a business that we have been working with and is very much, we believe will be donating to the fund, just in general, because they know that even the, if McAdams opens and all sixty of their slots are Schwan's employees, that doesn't even come close to what they need at the end of the day. It's not even, again, going to scratch the surface. Same with the hospital and what they're doing at Salina Childcare Association. You know, they, they, this is kind of the model that we went after, was Salina Childcare Center had four rooms closed prior to COVID happening. And then when COVID happened, it just made it ten times worse. They were not able to pay their staff. They were not able to get staff. Their center was operating at about sixty kiddos in their facility at that time. And Salina Regional Fund, Hospital Foundation stepped in and created an MOU. And again, their staff has access to so many slots and they pay a certain amount to help them increase their wages to the fifteen and eighteen. They're the only center in Saline County that has that currently. And when they did that, they saw immediately all of their staff openings filled, all of their rooms are open, and now they are at their full capacity. So again, we, we could look at the way that the hospital did that agreement as well. They do get the building free from the hospital. They don't pay any rent. And then the hospital was supplementing them as well.
Okay, well, we've kind of beat this up a little bit. Claire, thank you for your input here.
Thank you.
I think you've answered some really good questions from the commissioners. I, I know I have a better understanding of how this all operates at this point in time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to you, Phil. I think we're still, we're at Alternatives for Action. Is that where we're at so far on this? Or have you gone through that so far? I can't even remember.
Well, staff's recommendation would be to approve the MOU with Salina Area United Way.
And the budget impact says is pursuant to state law expenditures of this are not subject to the county's adopted budget. So, all right. Are there any public comment to all of our discussion? Please step forward, state your name and the organization you represent.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Renee Duxler, President and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to get up very quickly and voice our support as a Chamber of Commerce for this. We have been working very closely and have been in the middle of the childcare conversation since the three years that I've been here and, and even prior to that. And, and, and just to say that our employers are definitely very interested in being invested in childcare in the community. They do see the issue. For the most part, they want to leave childcare to the, the experts at the centers, so they're not opening their own childcare centers. They're not interested in that. But I do think with conversations that I've been in with Claire and our employers, especially our large employers in the community, including the city and the county, there is a desire to invest in this. Our employers up until this point have just been asking the same sort of questions that you've been asking. How does this really address this? And what is the sustainability of this? And I think being able to do this twofold plan with having an endowment that allows for, for funds to grow as well as addressing the issues right now, gives that option to them and they've been very receptive to it. The other point I want to make real quick, as I live, eat and breathe workforce development in our community, is what this does for the pipeline for childcare workers as well. If we bring that wage up across the community to a living wage, we are going to have more people who are interested in pursuing childcare. There are people who go to school and want to do this, but they cannot earn a living wage doing it. And so they end up working at Target or somewhere else that can give them a living wage. And so this helps us elevate the childcare education course. In conversations we've had with USD 305, creating a pathway. Salina Area Tech has their program. They're having a difficulty filling people because, again, they can go to school and pay for schooling, but then not be able to, to earn a living wage. So I wanted to make those points real quick, as well as just that general overall support from the chamber and from our employers in the community, that we've really appreciated United Way stepping up to take this on, being a credible organization to do the work and getting that one point eight seven million from the state is certainly making a lot of progress. And we think this is the, the solution and the way to move forward. And we appreciate, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Very key word in that conversation, and that is sustainability. So, very important. Phil, do you, are you aware of relative communities to Salina in Kansas? Are they taking the same steps that we are as far as their ARPA money goes with healthcare? Are we, are we elevated above them, below them, about in the average? Where, where, where do we fit in there?
So Reno County dedicated a much greater share of their ARPA funding to the United Way of Hutchinson Reno County, specifically for childcare as where, as well. I, I think they ended up with something like four and a half million of their ARPA funding going to childcare. You know, we, we didn't do that here because we have other priorities like courtrooms and public safety and other things that are part of our ARPA plan. But yeah, they, I would say they were the closest one that I'm aware of to kind of our, our size.
All right. I think we've discussed this to the nth degree. And I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve RFA 2023-150 as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-150 as presented for the ARPA Agreement for Childcare. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries five zero. Thanks for, to everyone who participated in this conversation and see where it goes from here. Thank you. We'll move to item number seven.
Final budget direction for 2024 with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So we have talked about the budget several times, including last week. But this, we did have on our coming soon list for this week that we would be talking about it again. So I felt like we would just have one more opportunity for Commissioners and members of the public to weigh in if there's any additional conversation regarding the budget before we publish it. And then, of course, have the final public hearing in August. So staff's recommendation would be just to affirm that the, the county administrators' recommended budget is what you want to be published for that public hearing and go forward to set that for August 22nd. But happy to take any other direction from the commission as you see fit.
I'm going to follow suit with what we've been doing today and ask for each Commissioner to either respond or, or say they're fine. Start with you, Commissioner Weiss. Any questions or?
No, I'm, I'm good to go. I, I, I think we've been through this in depth and, and made some hard decisions. And I, I think that the budget that they're now on, on the table is the one that I would like to see go to the public.
Commissioner Shadwick, anything?
I'm comfortable with as is.
Mr. Hay?
Same here.
Mr. Sparks?
Same. I'd, I applaud the whole, every one of the department heads and the administrators for going through all the hard decisions that had to may, be made in every department to come to this decision here of where this here has fallen as far as the budget goes. So I want to thank you, Mr. Administrator and Associates. So, thank you.
Well, my comments are, are similar. I, I mean, where was that at? I'm not happy with the budget. But I am happy with that we were able to, when we started out, it looked like our budget, the requests that were made was a sixteen percent increase from 2023 to 2024. We were able, with the help of staff, Administrator Mr. Smith Haynes, to take almost ten percent out of that proposed budget. So we have done everything that we could possibly do. It's been a, it's, it's a tremendous year for, for inflation. We have, again, funded a, a nice increase, I think, for the employees. And, and there is, there's a cost of doing business. You have to fund government. It's as simple as that. Again, I'm not happy with it, but I think, I'll echo what every other Commissioner said. We've done the best that we feel like we can do to come up with a reasonable budget for the next year. I, I just don't see how we could have cut it any further. There were some tough choices. I know there's some, probably some people that aren't happy, some equipment that wasn't purchased, wages that weren't increased as much as they would have liked, et cetera. And I've probably said enough. You get the message. We would have liked to have held a, a revenue neutral. Every one of us would have liked that, but it's not possible. It's just not possible with the inflation rate that, that America's going through. And we'll do the best we can next year. So I would echo the same comments that my other four colleagues have said and that, that we move forward with the adoption of this budget. I don't see, I don't see any way around it. So, any public comment regarding? So any public comment regarding? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion. We approve RFA 2023-153 as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-153 as presented for the final budget direction. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously five zero. Thanks everyone for their input. We'll move to category E, which is the informational items and item number one.
2023 Second Quarter Bond Interest Report with Jim DeBois, Sling County Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. DeBois.
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, Commissioner Vidrickson, I couldn't have said it better when you were talking about interest rates, inflation and things that are going on, but I hope to bring you a little bit of good news. As we look at the interest earnings report for the quarter ending in June 30th of this year, if you look three quarters way down your page, and I know you got a multiple amount of pages and I apologize for that, I'm not quite sure what happened in the system or how that occurred, but June 30th is where we're going to focus on. Second quarter earnings, we've made $266,653.66 compared to $146,310 last year. So we gained $140,343.38. Here's the great part, interest earned as of June of 2023 is $1,686,9233. I never thought we'd hit the million dollar mark. Granted, some of those are going to be because of the influx of money that the county has received and different things that has already been mentioned, but other things too, as I mentioned before, as the economy suffers a little bit, the Fed does increase the interest on that process and that's where we've made our money. We've made our money on the money market. We've made our money on CDs and good investments that we've had. And just so you know, 68% of that is already in our bank account. So that's already spendable money that we have. The last time we hit a million dollars was in 2007 and that was for the total amount of the year and that was 1.3 million dollars. So I'm very optimistic that if things continue to go the same way, we'll possibly hit that $2 million mark. So any questions?
Start with you, Commissioner Hay. No, Roger or Sparks?
No.
Anything?
Looks good.
Commissioner Wies?
Quick question of the administrator. What did we forecast and budget that number to look like?
So when we developed the budget for 2023, based on kind of where we had been for the last couple of years and where interest rates were at that time, we put in, I think it was 350,000 in the budget for this year. In the budget for 2024, we have increased that. I believe I've put in 800,000 for next year and assumed that we would get not quite a million, but a higher than, I think I assumed we would get 750 for this year. And then, so yeah, tracking it.
And does that include idle bond proceeds and idle fund proceeds?
No, the idle bond proceeds have to stay with the bonds, so that's only the idle funds.
Commissioner Shadwick, anything? And Commissioner Vidrickson has no questions, so thank you for that report. We'll move to item number two.
2023 Idle Funds Report with Jim DeBois, Sling County Treasurer.
Good morning again, Jim.
Good morning. Idle Bond Proceeds Report for Second Quarter. We have $329,469 compared to last year's total proceeds of $332,682. And as mentioned before, none of that was included in the idle fund proceeds. So that's completely separate from that. So as we move towards depleting those funds, we'll just kind of go with the idle fund report and go from there.
Any questions from Commissioner Sparks, Mr. Hay, Wies?
Quick question. This stays in the bond and it helps reduce the bond amount. We can use the interest at some point to reduce or make payments towards the bond. Is that how it's used?
So this is actually, so these are bond proceeds. So the biggest bulk of these, of course, is the jail bond. And so we're actually using the interest to make payments on the project at this point. But if there's anything left over, which in the case of the jail, there won't be, we'll fully expend that and then spend a little bit from excess sales tax as you all approved earlier this year. But if there were anything left over, then yeah, we could put it towards bond payments.
Mr. Shadwick, anything?
Nope.
All righty, and I have nothing else, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Appreciate your report. We'll move to item number three.
Quarterly Budget Update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning again. So this is a good follow on to the treasurer's report. I've looked at the budget as I do quarterly through the end of June and I would characterize where we are as things are slowing down. You know, interest is a bright spot. Sales tax remains a bright spot, but it's not nearly as bright as it was through this time last year. And other things that are economically dependent like filing fees in the registered deeds office, planning and zoning fees, they're all doing fine in terms of the budget, but much slower than they were at 63022. So we're definitely seeing signs of that economic slowdown. And then conversely, on the expenditure side, we do have some departments that, you know, nobody is over their budget halfway through the year, but there are some folks who are at more than 50% halfway through the year. And again, those are places where it would not be surprising. Things like the senior center is spending a heck of a lot of money on food, right? We all know that. And so the only real spot of concern, I guess I would say, is the health department. They, because they're in their own fund and it's a little over 50%, I did have a conversation with Director Tiller about that and making sure that they're closely monitoring that through the remainder of the year. They do have, the good news on the health department side is they do have some excess grant revenues and so frequently Randy Hofmeyer will let us adjust those on the budget side, but we need to nonetheless make sure that that is true through the end of the year. The only other place where I see that is likely to just blow through the budget is the coroner's office once again. And you know, that's been the case for the last couple of years and we keep adjusting that upwards every year and it continues to be a, no matter how much we put there, we need more. So that's kind of the high level summary of the county budgets through the middle of the year and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions, anyone? All right, we'll move to item number four.
County Administrator Update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So for today's update, I just wanted to talk about a couple of organizations, NACO and KAC. So for the last four days, I have been in Austin, Texas, attending the annual conference for the National Association of Counties. There was a great group of Kansas delegates this year. I think we had 21 folks from Kansas who went down and including some of our neighbors from McPherson and Dickinson Counties were there. Lots of great information. Counties around the country are dealing with the same types of things that Sling County is dealing with. So mental health, workforce development, broadband, all those, all those types of things were covered. So housing, I went to two sessions on housing. There's a new set of recommendations that Housing Task Force has come up with. So just got back early this morning and I'll be wading through all of the stuff I picked up and trying to synthesize it moving forward, but it was, it was a really pretty valuable, valuable conference. The voting yesterday was the business meeting and that was sort of anticlimactic. One of the candidates for second vice president dropped out of the race and so it was sort of unanimous who was going to do that. And there was only one of the platform, the legislative platform, things that was controversial at all. Everything else passed unanimously. So speaking of legislative platform, the other organization that I wanted to talk about was the Kansas Association of Counties. So KAC was represented at NACO. Both the executive director and deputy executive director were down there and they spoke, of course, about the federal platform, which NACO deals with, but also the state level platform and encouraged counties to engage in that process. So this is the time of year where those ideas for the 2024 legislative session are being gathered by KAC. So there's a form out there. If commissioners have anything that you think that Sling County ought to be pushing for next year, we can fill that out and get it into their process. I believe August 11th is the due date, so we have a little bit of time here, but I wanted to bring it to your attention in case we wanted to get anything and have it ratified by the commission before we send it off.
I think that's a good point and we all need to take a little stock of ourselves and think about this, what we may want to go forward with any legislative policy requests that go on to the legislature itself, but it is presented by the KAC. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this would be for inclusion in their platform. Yeah.
To anyone else? All right, thank you for that update. We'll move to item number five.
Commissioners' Comments.
I just want to come in as that last week I attended the Central Kansas Mental Health Foundation Board of Directors Meeting and something that, and I forgot to mention last week and I thought, after this conversation with the childcare and everything else is that one of the major things that's really benefiting Sling County is Central Kansas Mental Health and other counties around the area is that they have clinicians in each one of the schools and to help with children or the kids not attending school. And with these clinicians now, Central Kansas Mental Health has increased the attendance records by over 70% of the people, these amount of children that's been through their cases. And I just wanted to bring that to their attention here. That is like, that is a major factor. I feel that, that we're providing, Central Kansas Mental Health is really helping with the attendance records in the school districts around the area. So I just wanted to bring that to attention, so.
Anyone else? All right, number six.
Announcements.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to mention that we will not be here next Tuesday morning. It will be our next study session for the commission and we'll be over at the sheriff's office that morning for a follow-up discussion around the facilities that we talked about earlier this year.
And that is an open public meeting.
I just got, I want to bring to the attention of everybody on August 1st at 11:30 over at the Chamber Annex, Tracy Mann is going to be in town and he's going to do a town hall meeting. I really encourage everybody who wants to hear what's going on in Kansas and what Tracy has to say to please attend this. Like I said, it's 11:30 over at the Chamber Annex.
Okay. I don't believe that we have any presentations, so we'll move on to the concept discussion. This portion of the meeting is reserved for informational discussion between commissioners and staff on topics for which no action is currently proposed. And item number one is?
Discussion of Displaying Progress on Vision for Commissioners and the Public.
So you got that website up for me here? So the commissioners earlier this year put some work into a vision plan for 2023 and staff has been working on those items. You heard one earlier today. Michelle Weiss presented one and then the next item on the agenda after this will be another one, task force reports. So the, the idea had come up for, okay, you know, we're certainly working through those and bringing them back to the commission as they get reported, et cetera. But would it be helpful either for the five of you or for the public to have a way that these are displayed sort of systematically? And so attached to your packet for today was one version of something like that. And that, that particular report is about, I think it was 13 pages as it got printed out. That's sort of more focused on maybe the types of things that commissioners would be interested in. There's a lot more dates, et cetera, in that. This one that's on the screen, this website is a little bit more focused on the public and the kinds of information that the public might want to see. And so this is arranged by the different topics. At the top, you can see that the colors and so forth are very consistent with our branding on the regular county website. And then if you scroll down, there are the little bars, green, yellow sort of bars on, you know, is this one on track? How close is it to being completed, et cetera? And then you can, you know, those are all clickable. If folks have questions, you can, you can read more about the various topics, have little dials of progress, et cetera. So, you know, these are all options that, that exist for how we might display vision information, of course, for the current plan or, you know, next year if you, you know, we go through this process again and make some refinements. There are companies that do this for a living, right? So this, this particular example here comes from a company that we've been working with, been kind of doing the training for the employees on how to do this. You, you will see it looks fairly similar to our ARPA dashboard, if you remember what that looks like. It's arranged in a very similar format and that's developed by a different company that we are. that we already, you know, have on board as part of our ARPA plan. When I was at the conference this Saturday, I went to the vendor hall and found another company that does this as well. So, I, I just, the, the concept discussion for the commissioners to have a discussion about, provide some feedback is, is there value in this? Do you like this concept? And, and to what extent would you like us to work on sort of identifying how to do this and, and what it might look like, so?
Well, it looks like to, to me that it's, it's a very informational, very helpful. Obviously, my comments would center around the cost. Who, who, do we buy the program and then we maintain it? Or does it all, we give them the facts and figures and they put it together? How does that work?
Well, I think there are options both ways. Obviously, if we maintain it, it's a little bit cheaper than if we just give it to them and have them do it. Like with any software program, there is a, you know, a setup cost and then an ongoing maintenance sort of thing. So, yes, I would say one of the considerations in doing this is whether it's cost effective and, and whether, whether it's, this information is valuable enough for the public that it's something that we want to do in this sort of interactive format? Or whether we're happy with more of a just, here's a report in PDF kind of thing for now and we could evolve into this at some future time.
Well, believe me, those citizens that are interested in this, it's very helpful to them. Unfortunately, I don't think that percentage of, of our population is very big that really, you know, they're just interested in what are my taxes and item by item, they're really not that interested. It's very helpful. I don't, I don't mean to say that it's not, but again, I'd, I'd want to see the, is this going to cost us $10,000 or $100,000 or what, what is the number?
In between those two.
No, I figured it's probably somewhere. Better to go high than not high enough, so that's, that's where I'm at. It looks nice. It would be helpful to those who wish to, to, to use it, however small that fraction of the population might be. So, any other comments?
I think it would be nice if we had a way for the public to weigh in and, and get their opinion on this. I, I think this serves them more than it serves us. So, is, is there some mechanism that we can put in place where, where they can make an opinion?
I agree with that. In looking at it, it's very user-friendly and it's easy for, you know, the public to get out, take a look at it, get, you know, don't overburden them with a bunch of numbers and everything. So, I agree with Commissioner Weiss of there's a way that the public can interact and, and give their opinion or, you know, let us know. I mean, that's who we're working for. Let the public let us know what's going on.
Got anything, Roger?
I like it. I'm always worried about staff time and whether, whether we have enough time to do stuff. Late seems pretty.
And I was just having a, a quick thought here is that this type of vision plan here, it brought up another thought and, and I, I gotta say is that I don't go looking for it on, on our county website. Is there a place to, for constituents to go and ask questions or give their feedback on certain items? Or is that what this here is?
Well, so, I mean, we do have an opportunity for folks to email the commissioners and that sort of thing, but there's not a specific feedback loop on the vision right now. In fact, the vision isn't, I don't think it's even on the commissioner's page right at the moment. So, you know, there, there are various iterations of, you know, how far you want us to go with that. And we can certainly just sort of put it there and people could email you if they want or we could, you know, have surveys and, you know, interactive.
Okay, and because that's, that was one of my thoughts is that because we, we've all looked at and received many emails in regards to the solar farm project that is years down the road. But anyway, it's that, that, that has become a, quite the little thought process out here. And I didn't know if there was an area or anything for people to go to on the website to voice their concern or their opinions with that over an email to directly to the commissioners.
So, are you talking about on the vision specifically or on something more general like facilities?
Yeah, well, I, I didn't know if, if, if the vision plan here would address that type of thing in the future, if this ever does get.
Yeah, no, I think you're bringing up a really great point, Commissioner Sparks. And I've, I've talked in, in the, with the folks that we've been working with and helped us create this example, you know, I, I talked to them and I said, well, this isn't all we do, right? I mean, we, we, like, the commission has prioritized these things, but then there's also a lot of other stuff that we do on a daily basis. And so, you know, some, some organizations attempt to have their vision cover everything. Some folks have, you know, more like what we do where it's, the vision is one thing and then the, sort of the regular work of the organization is something different. I've also seen some examples of places where they have two plans. They have this sort of like, the moving us forward plan and the everyday plan. So, I think that is, that is a whole conversation for the commission to have at some point is, you know, how comprehensive do you want this to be? And then what kind of feedback loop?
Well, what I think is we need to take this to the next step. That is cost, what's it going to cost? Commissioner Shadwick brought up time consuming for staff. What's, what's that going to be? Someone else brought up the, the fact that maybe we could poll the public and see how many of them are really interested in doing something like this. So, for us to sit up here and say yes or no today is probably not the right step to take as it is with a lot of things. So, we need a little more information and, and we can make us, make a stab at what we really want to accomplish here. But it, it, it looks like a great thing, a great tool, but the other things that are in, in play here are, we've just mentioned. So, hopefully that gives you some direction to go forward.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number two.
Discussion of task force report on bonding for county projects.
So, as I mentioned, this is a report back from the task force on bonding. And so, that was attached in your packet and really just looking for feedback from the commission on whether that addressed what you were thinking? Did it hit the mark of what you were expecting? It's kind of divided into road and bridge and then facilities kind, kinds of options. So, be happy to take any feedback from you all. If it looks good, then we'll consider this one sort of checked off the list.
I think it looks good. Roger, anything?
It, it looks good. There's a lot of, a lot of items in here that I would, I'd consider, but it's like there, it's, it's a, it's, I love the way it's put together. Yes, it's a, and I, for some reason in the back of my, I'm still scared of this bonding thing, you know? I, I, I feel that it's like if, if we can't raise enough taxes to do it today, it's like, you know, it's like there is other mechanisms to get there. But this is, to me is a, it's nice to have that in front of you, to look at, to say, here's, here's a direction we could go. Yep.
Mr. Weiss?
Well, I've, I've always liked to pay as you go, but I think Commissioner Shadwick many times has brought up that we're, we're improving things for the future and why not let the future help pay for some of those costs that which bonding would be that. You could do more with the same dollars, but you just had to be careful. It's a slippery slope that you don't put yourself in, in harm's way as far as running a big deficit.
Mr. Shadwick, any comments? I'm kind of in the same boat. I need to review this a little closer than what I have given the time for this space, so, but it does look, on the surface anyway, an interesting concept, format, so forth. Okay, I don't, I don't know if you were looking for more in that for, I, I will say that the agenda for next week, or not, not next week, we're not going to be here, but the 8th, so far is be a monthly meeting of the jail update, planning and zoning update, and Department of Senior Services update. So, at this stage, it appears that we have an executive session.
We would actually like to have two. So, the first, staff would request a, maybe a three-minute recess for a bio break and then go into executive session, recess to executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss negotiations with the employee council for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:50.
Looking for a motion?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we take a three-minute break first and then move into a 10-minute executive session for the purpose of employer-employee negotiations exception to the Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes after that. And we'll reconvene in here at 10:50.
Yep.
And all of those in favor of that motion, please say aye. 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 Pose, same sign, we're going to be in the executive session. Post, same sign, we're gonna be in the executive session. All right, we're back from executive session, back into regular session. Again, I will state that there was no action taken. And it looks like our next action would be a move for adjournment. All right, we're back from executive session, back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and a seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Again, I will state that there was no action taken.
Aye.
We will have a second executive session for non-elected personnel. Aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. We're adjourned. Till, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head performance evaluation for five minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:57.